We will begin with a moment of silence led by prayer by one of our board members. And then if you're capable to stand with us for the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for tonight, for this board meeting. We thank you tonight for the members of the board that are here, our deputy clerk and our superintendent that are here, the students that are here, the community support, the staff and the principals that are here, the teachers. Thank you that we are able to come together tonight to continue to strive to do the best that we can for our Nottaway students. We thank you for your grace and for your mercy. Guide this meeting, guide the board, the superintendent, guide the speakers, and keep us in your keeping care. In the name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the agenda for March 13th.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Awards and recognition. Nottaway High School, Dr. Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Grimes. This evening, I'm really excited about the highlights that you're going to see this evening. It's from the high school's Cougar Cafe. They started back in the fall and it's just hit the ground running. And so I'm actually going to turn it over to Mr. Wilson and his team for their presentation this evening. And I even think they have some treats for y'all.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Grimes and Ms. Meyer. We'll wait for them to come on in and bring a treat.
Do you want to join us?
All right.
We'll make them now or?
Yeah, make them now.
Okay, all right. Well, why don't we make us some drinks? I can start with the presentation.
Yeah.
All right. The Cougar Cafe. All right. They launched this cafe October 21st, 2024, and to date, they have filled over 900 orders of coffee, tea, and hot chocolate.
Yes.
They've participated in different community events. We had a Nottaway County Public Schools Fall Festival where they set up. They worked with the Youth Record Association, the basketball, and they've also visited Kestafar School and made coffee deliveries. All right, fundraising and educational opportunities. They have donated to the animal shelter and they went and visited animals and it was a nice little field trip. They have helped a family in need. And they also purchased books for students at the NIS Book Fair. And they've had a couple of different celebrations where, I think we talked about that, where they included, the first, they had some meals that they have been able to fund with some of the proceeds from their coffee sales. And I just mentioned that Thanksgiving holiday meals, they did a Thanksgiving meal. It was held here in our library. They furnished all the food, all the families were invited and had a right, nice meal. The students developed the recipes, they created shopping lists, and they actually went to Blackstone Walmart and purchased stuff together. And like I said, they prepared a full meal for the families, ham, mashed potatoes, green beans, macaroni and cheese, rolls, desserts here at the school and they eat in the library. And they had a classroom secret Santa. And again, the students shop with their classmates using personalized lists and exchange gifts for a holiday party. Slow down a little bit. I don't want to be finishing and moving fast, but there's a few pictures here of, from the Thanksgiving dinner, as well as the Christmas gift exchange they had. And I like the one in the middle where they are actually in Walmart and they took a selfie where they was shopping. And through this program, they've developed a lot of skills and a lot of learning opportunities. Writing, they had to write the Thanksgiving notes and letters. They mailed them, they get to go to the post office, and then they ordered things when they went to Mitchell's Restaurant. They obtained individual library cards for their library visit. They visited the Citizen Bank and Trust to learn more about checking and savings. Also visited the Blackstone Fire Department and Police Department to learn about community helpers. And then they visited Heritage Hall, they created some cards and coloring sheets for the residents, which was, went over, and all of these visits went over very well. I was about to say Heritage Hall, but everybody was very happy to see them and they have enjoyed going out and interacting with the different organizations as well. Few more pictures here. And have a short video.
You can save hundreds, Liberty Mutual.
CBS News, Nottaway's own, Ms. Colburn came out, she came out twice and did a nice interview and a nice piece on them, which I really appreciate. And we'll play, and some of you may have seen it on the news, but we'll play a short clip for you.
Whoa, very funny, Limu. Doesn't even look like me.
At Wayfair, we're game for every style.
Let's play charades. I'll act out my favorite chair.
Welcome.
Do we have to put on this apron?
Yeah. To the Cougar Cafe.
You're going to be my pump girl.
Where sugar, syrup.
One, two.
Milk.
Half and half, medium pour.
Half and half, medium pour.
And ice help make a mean cup of joe.
Yeah, I'm going to get y'all some coffee, hot coffee, tea. Yeah, make your day feel better.
Sophomore Niaja Merritt is quite the saleswoman.
This is like a cinnamon bread. You could actually eat this with cinnamon.
She and her 12 classmates in Nottaway's Life Skills Program are serving up special sweater weather coffees.
It's given fall.
While also practicing math.
Pour a little bit more.
There you go. Reading.
All right, we have her.
And social skills.
Hey, Miss Stacy, we got your coffee.
We incorporate that into everything that we do.
Madeline Duffy is Nottaway's exceptional education teacher.
And I love it.
It was her idea to transform this tiny corner classroom into a cafe.
So here we are, and we're growing every day, honestly.
I got tired of the room looking lonely, like any people.
Preparing students like Niaja for the future is Ms. Duffy's job.
Giving them these life skills, I mean, they work on money skills, they work on communication skills, which is a huge thing for our students.
And making 20 iced orders a day has become Kenyans.
It's good, like you got to focus, concentrate, and serious.
The senior who's also studying culinary arts hopes his experience in the bistro.
I love it.
Will help him become a chef.
I know that he'll accomplish that, and he's learning all those skills and he's adapting, and he's doing exactly what he needs to do.
Both Kenyon and Niaja.
Smells of anomalies.
Take their roles as coffee creators and deliverers seriously.
We deliver his coffee, he's like, oh, yeah, the coffee.
Where is this located in this space? Thank you for delivering. Where is it located?
Well, it's located in the school store, right there, as you come in the door. But when we had that snow, it has a leak in the roof there, so they've actually moved all the equipment into their classrooms.
Okay.
And then when they prepare the coffee, they put it on a cart like this and will go door to door and deliver the coffee to the teachers. And they, they've been to every school here at the complex, Crew Primary, Blackstone, Kestafar, so they, they've been getting out and.
All right. Can we come by and get a cup of coffee in the morning?
Yes, yes. The cafe's not open every day. So what we need to do is, next time we'll, we'll reach out.
And just one last thing. You all know that you've started something, right? And we'll expect this from the afternoon.
Yes, sir.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're at 2:00 in the morning.
Niaja would like to maybe say something.
About Mike.
All right. Before we go, one of the students wanted to say something.
All right, okay.
Yes.
They call it time you need.
I like it. Okay, guys, so, yeah, I'm a new student, I'm from Merritt. I really like school, I really like dealing with the coffee, and I'm thankful for having you guys here, because if you guys want to come get a coffee, know where it's at, in the Duffy's Room, we're doing a really good job, and I'm really glad that you guys like it, so, yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Me and you are breaking.
If you're a teacher of this group, raise your hand. Thank you.
You guys, good job, guys.
We are saying what we're.
The next time they show up, you'll have to have cash. I need to ask a question, though. Is there any delegations? Thank you. We'll move to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The action items, budget, adoption, Meyer?
All right, so, nothing's changed since you all got your budget books last week. I did look into something Mr. Abbott had asked, which I know Ms. Dr. Grimes told you all earlier today, was some figures of potentially adjusting teacher pay, or the teacher pay scale. And while it's something I still want to do, we just don't have the funds to do it now. It doesn't mean that that's a no for the rest, you know, for next year, it just means we may have to wait until the state actually formally passes their budget to make any more adjustments to, you know, anything in the budget. And I'll show you some of what that is here in a minute. So I'm just going to go over the state budget, go over some of the things that we did with the budget, and then what our request to the board supervisors is going to be. And this is, this is a budget comparison for two things. So the budget books that you all have are based solely on the biennial budget that was passed and signed last May, because that is what is currently law for the 25, 26 school year. What I have put in here is the update on the budget bill that was passed by the General Assembly. Now, as my understanding, the governor is going to propose amendments, so we won't have a signed budget until probably sometime in April. But this is just to show you the difference between the biennial budget and what the General Assembly has. And there is, there is a difference, not a huge amount, but I mean, not that we could be able to do a little bit with. So you'll see, you know, if, you know, the General Assembly budget is passed as is, which I mean, I know that it's not going to be, we would see an influx of $639,835 just in state revenue. So that would be able to potentially, you know, fund, one, some of the things that I had to cut from the budget that we would like to add back to the budget, or, two, be able to fund, you know, potentially addressing the teacher pay scale, which is something, you know, I had mentioned that I wanted to do and I was hoping to do, we just, we did not have the additional funding to be able to do so at the point in time with using the biennial budget. So one of the things that I did talk to you about during the work session is the fact that we had to cut a million dollars out of the budget. This had nothing to do with any request from the board supervisors, it was just the fact that we did not have the revenue coming in to be able to cover all of the expenditures that were budgeted on the forefront. That means we had to look for cuts in several places. So, you know, we cut vacancies that we deemed not needed, you know, we cut, you know, a lot of materials and supplies and purchase service lines where we felt like we could cut. Some got cut that I did not want to, and those, I have a list of priorities of where we need to place funding back if we get additional funds from the state, or if we have any funds left over at the end of the year that we can carry over to offset next year's budget. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of things that we still want to do, it's just we do not have any additional funding at this point in time to do. Now, that's not to say we won't. You know, this is really the first school year that we've had without any type of extra ester funding. So really and truly, come June, we'll see just how well we have budgeted, and we could then look to see, okay, well, we know this is what we budgeted this year, maybe we overbudgeted. So maybe we can look at those lines for offsetting next school year as we kind of really truly know where we're at. So, you know, it's just, it's one of those things that it's kind of a tiered approach for, for, you know, how to budget for years going forward. So what is our current request to the board supervisors? Well, it is, you know, their required local contribution, which is the required local effort and the required local match. That is 6.6161,000. Now, depending upon the state budget that gets passed, there is the potential for that to increase solely based off of just what the General Assembly passed, said if that gets passed as is, which I highly doubt, there could be a potential increase of an additional 155,000 on the part of the county. I will not know that until we have a state budget signed. Anticipated ANT-C funding, which is, you know, we finalized that budget this week, is $318,710.28. For those of you who are on the joint board, you will get to see the ANT-C budget at the March 27th meeting for you all to approve that meeting. So that's where we're at with the budget. Definitely, probably one of the hardest budgets I've had to put together since I've been here, but we are where we are, and we will move on moving forward and determining other ways that we can save in the process.
Are there any questions?
This evening, I just ask if you all have enough to adopt the budget, because we do have to have it to the county prior to April 1.
Well, I'll ask for a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'd just like to ask, is the board aware of what my request was?
I was.
Yes.
I know it was sent to them this afternoon, I don't know if everybody got to read their emails, so just, I can go through it if you'd like for me.
My, my request was to see if we couldn't increase what I'll call the zero line, because some of the concern that we have heard in trying to recruit is that our starting pay is lower than many of the other districts in our general vicinity. So I was hopeful if we could figure out a way, a math way to increase that zero line and somehow spread the pain across the other 39 steps.
Which I think would be a good idea, too, soon as we can find a way to do, I think that would do a great job of attracting teachers.
And if funding comes in, I would hope that we would be able to do something like that so that we have a little more in our arsenal when it comes to recruiting. But like many of you, I did not have an opportunity to look at the computer today because I was home for maybe 30 minutes during the day. But having said that, are there any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, hearing none. We look forward to any adjustments that may be necessary due to our friends in. Information items, the substitute update, Dr. Griner.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone's enjoying their coffee and such. So, Mr. Abbott presented three questions regarding some data regarding substitutes. That's on. The three questions for how much, how many were asked to work of the 67 substitutes, how many actually worked, how many positions required a sub. Three simple, straightforward questions. Historically, as you know, working with education and stuff like that, simple questions sometimes don't have simple answers. So hopefully, I'm going to work through this so that the questions kind of have responses with that. So, we use a system, an absentee management system called Frontline. So, to answer the first question, how many substitutes were asked to work, it would be 100% of those folks that are listed, because the system, if you're listed, the system calls every single substitute in that category, in that list that's active. So to answer that question, it would be 100%. Now, the tangent where it gets less simple is the fact that, one, the schools have ability to individually, and teachers have the ability to individually call substitutes directly without that, and sometimes that information isn't relayed back into Frontline to get the accurate data. But to answer the question specifically, every substitute that's listed is called and reached out. So in the month of January, there's 1,957 calls from the system for substitute requests. As you can see, February, as of the 25th of February, 1371. I want to be clear, calls from the system, because you're going to have another outlier where it could be, where the, so like I said earlier, the school could be calling, or the teachers could be calling directly, if that makes sense. Here's hopefully to clarify some of the outliers and the things that could garble up the, the simple questions. So like I said, substitutes are able to, and we've, we found, prefer to go into the system, log in, select the jobs that they want ahead of time and independently, so they don't get that 4:30 in the morning phone call, you know, in that category, they can just, they're already preset, so that job is taken care of. Second point, the data that's provided that I have that you'll see next is just from the frontline data, because we don't have the anecdotal information from the schools or the tracking mechanisms that the schools or the specific teachers would call. So whenever a teacher or a school would set something up independently, we would hope that they would go back into the system and say job filled or something, filled by Joe Smith or whatever in that category. So then we would see that information. Sometimes it doesn't make it, so that's why the numbers are going to be two different sets potentially. On top of that, a nice thing about it, for the, for the employees of it, Frontline is very, very customizable. You can select, like if I was a substitute, I could select a specific building, I could select a certain day, I could select a certain grade level, I could select a certain teacher and that. So it's very, very customizable, which in turn would potentially, again, skew some of the overall numbers with that. So even though I'm a number 98 on the sub list, I may have the stuff already pre-arranged in that category. So the second question, how many were asked to work? So from the January frontline, the first column, there was, you can see the calls that were made, the location of the schools, obviously. The percentage is of the total count of calls. So for example, Blackstone had 536 calls from the system into frontline for substitutes. So of that, it was 27% of the calls were from Blackstone for the month of January. Same thing, but for a target mark of the 25th of February. So here's how many actually worked. So from January, you'll see the, the number of positions filled, the number of positions unfilled, and then the overall fill rate, the percentage of filled. And then with an overall system-wide fill rate of 68%. So in the month, just example, Blackstone, the month of January, it filled 28 vacant subpositions. However, had 17 that were not filled in that category. This, I think, is where we get into the concern, the no fill rate is the part that's troubling. And again, this is snapshot of February through the 25th. We included ANT-C on this because they, they use our pool of substitutes as well. So how many positions required a substitute for January? You can see the data there. I'm trying not to read to you because it's quite straightforward. Again, February's data.
General question?
Of course.
These absences, is there any, are there any particular factors that is a reason a teacher?
Yes. Going back, historically, it's personal leave and sick leave. Those are the two dominant categories, if you will, because again, the system, when you put in, it's certain categories where it's put in. So it's doctor's appointments, it's I got a sick kid, it's I need to take a dentist appointment in that category. As we talked about before, October seems to be a significant spike. There was another month later on that was another spike. We're still trying to figure out some of the reasons why. I mean, there's guesses as to aspects of things. For example, one of the aspects of October is, you know, we have the start of school, September, everyone's shiny and new kind of thing, and then school starts, we get into the thing of things, then all of a sudden, the appointments start coming in, because now we've got sick kids, everyone's around each other and so on. So we really don't have any hard data of the whys, but we, we do charge, the principals do a pretty good job about, they're getting better to filter about what's going on, and because not every absence has to be approved. Well, I say, a sick, sick leave, you have that, but if it's like a personal leave and you've accumulated stuff, the supervisor can ask in that category. So that's some of the things that they're, they're taking a look at, just instead of a blanket yes to everything, just asking some questions. You know, does appointment have to be right in the middle of the day? Can the appointment be right after work? And so on.
Are most of these absences something that is known ahead of time so that plans can be made, or are most of them last minute?
I would, I would say yes. I'm going to turn around. Most of them are kind of, to the most part, scheduled.
The ones that you can't fill are the ones that.
Yeah, the unfilled ones.
Fill in the night up.
Right. The unfilled numbers are usually the ones, unfilled are usually the ones at last minute.
Three of them at the last minute?
For the month. Keep in mind, these numbers are for months, not a.
Like two a day.
Yeah.
That's a lot. It's a lot.
I know you asked three questions. Hopefully, that kind of covered the three questions to a certain degree. There is still work to be done, but in the aspect of, you know, 100% of the substitutes are contacted through that system.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate this information, because that, it does help. But of the 67 substitutes, over these, this two-month period of time, do you know how many of them never worked?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I don't have that, but that's something we could probably grab.
Well, the reason that I ask that is, is sometimes you have to fish or cut bait.
True.
So if, if, if they're so particular that they only want to take a certain spot, and that spot is rarely vacant, either that substitute needs to expand their horizon, or we need to take a second look. Because the numbers here suggest that we need more substitutes.
True.
The 67 isn't enough, but if, if there's 10% of the 67 never choose to work, then that's a problem in and of itself.
If we have numbers, if we have, any information that comes to us, we address it. If there's a concern at the school, it's addressed. If there's a gap in work, you know, Kristin, Heather, myself, we all kind of tag-team and will address those concerns if they pop up, so. But yes, to your, to your point, that is accurate.
Because one of the things, I believe in my mind, the thing that started all of this was a teacher that came and said that their planning time didn't happen because they were always obligated to fill in the space. And if my memory's correct, of the five schools, four indicated they didn't have a problem with that. All of their teachers in four schools got it. The high school was the. The high school was the problem area. Yet, when I look at these absences, the high school isn't the leader when it comes to absences. And there are more teachers in the high school than there are in the other schools. So there, we, somehow, and I don't have any magic words that will fix it, but we have to figure out how to better adjust for those circumstances. The data helps, because now we know where the holes are. Now we have to figure out how to fill those holes, and I know that this board wants to help do that. I mean, we came back with the, and I know that you've worked on this, the companies that will help provide those kinds of things, and I know we're still looking at that. And money's important, and it's essential to getting some of these things done. So we'll have to figure out if we can find that $40,000 to figure out how to do this, if it can help mitigate some of these issues. Because not having a teacher in a classroom means something. But I don't know if anybody else has any questions, but I appreciate. Where do we stand on outsourcing?
It's really funding. We have a company that we feel confident. We've done a lot of research on it, talked to a lot of our neighbors. So we have a company that is, if we were able to do that, we have a company that we feel comfortable with.
And may I ask the name of that company that you Yes, ESS. ESS. Of the three, ESS was the one that could meet the majority of the expectations.
Obviously, yes.
Can I get a copy of it?
Of course.
Any other questions?
Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Burtville feasibility update, Ms. Meyer.
So last week, Mr. Templeton, Dr. Grams, and I met virtually with the architecture firm. The previous day, they had sent Mr. Templeton and myself some additional questions that they wanted some answers to. They also have asked for some additional building schematics that Mr. Templeton had to go search through, through his massive amount of blueprints that he has down in his office. We have since given them all of the additional information they wanted. They also were talking to us about some of the VDOE, School Building Requirements and Regulations, and just kind of talking through that with us as far as what that entails, asking some additional questions. So we've asked them to give us as many options as they can in the report, to be able to provide you all with as much information as possible. Right now, the timeline has been extended out, just because of them doing some additional information gathering and research. So right now, they are anticipating getting us a draft by the end of April, and then hopefully I can get them out here to present to you all in May. And that is where we kind of stand right now. Just trying to make sure that they can be as comprehensive as possible in providing the different options. Yeah, we, they have certain guidelines as far as how many square feet are supposed to be in a classroom, and that's all dependent upon, you know, the grade that's in the classroom, the configuration of the school. So they're going to, you know, give us some options based upon the current square footage and current layout, and what may need to be changed in order to make it, you know, an elementary school, which is what you all kind of, have kind of spoken about. But then they'll give us some other options to get us, you know, kind of truly up to Virginia Department of Education's guidelines on a true elementary school at its full potential as far as spatial. So there's a lot of extra moving pieces and parts that we were not aware of. I've learned some things along the way in these conversations. Now that I've actually read through those building guidelines, it'll actually help us just on our five schools that we do have, as we are, you know, looking at, you know, upgrading, renovating, and, you know, doing sorts of things to get us, you know, refreshed over the next however many years. But it is definitely, it is a much more comprehensive process than what I anticipated it to be, but they are being very thorough. And so they're going to provide you with multiple options as to what that school could do, could be, so that you all just have all the information to make any decision on the future use of that school. So that's the update for this evening. If you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. I'm good. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Two questions. Did I hear you correctly when you said they contacted you about VDOE requirements?
So they, as one of our meetings, that we were asking questions, they brought up the Virginia Department of Education building requirements. I knew they were out there, I've just never honestly read through them. Them having, you know, constructed many and renovated many schools, they're very much more familiar with it. So they kind of contacted us with questions about the vision for the schools, they kind of knew which direction to go. We told them that the vision for the school was kind of up in the air and at the board's discretion, so we would like as many options as possible, so that you all can make those decisions as we move forward as to what to do with that building. So there's some different configuration options they're going to provide to us based upon different levels of requirement within those building guidelines.
I appreciate that. I asked that question because I knew the individual we chose, they'd had prior experience with schools, and so that raised a red flag for me. If they have prior experience, why are they asking you the requirements when they should already know that?
Yeah, they wanted some guidance from us as far as what we were looking for.
Understood. They weren't really asking us what the requirements were. They were basically asking us if we knew that these were the requirements, and then based on that, what is it that the board is looking for?
I appreciate that clarification. I was a little confused. One other question, and this is not pointed or to anything. This is just to clear the water and some things that have been brought to my attention. Has the division requested that anybody who's in the building to move?
No. So currently, now, we haven't been doing any additional new building use. We have not approved any. What we have stated is, as long as the registrar is there, that, like with Feedmore, they are allowed to stay currently, and they're paying utilities for us. We've allowed them to continue, because one, they are looking for, you know, another location. They, you know, holding a key to the building for them is not necessarily the direction we want to go, because we do have stuff stored over there. We do have it for the registrar, because we don't go and open and close that building for them. So they are aware that once the registrar moves, then at that point, they won't need to absolutely make a decision on what they want to do, but I have been extending them just as I've been getting information. But other than that, like we have not done any further additional uses, other than there is a church that rents it on the weekend, and they do pay for that rental. Winter Guard currently is using the gym for practice, which that's one of our sports teams, you know, obviously we will allow that. And then there is a youth group that, once again, they rent the gym to be able to use it one day a week. So currently, we don't have any additional people using that building, other than the people that were currently paying. We have not given permission to anybody else. Like State Police hasn't been using it, VCVR hasn't been using it, the county has not been using it, other than the voter registrar office. So we've kind of pulled back on that while we are in the process of doing this, plus, you know, working with the county to determine what's the future of the registrar out there as well.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
What's the timeline for the registrar?
I do not know that answer. I know that there are some extra steps that they had to take for that to happen, but I do not have an updated timeline as to when that could potentially, when they could potentially move out.
Is there a way to encourage them? Increasing the cost? Because as I understand it, the registrar got a, the county got a really good deal, and registrar's been there temporarily for the last five years.
It is my understanding, what's holding them back right now is there was additional paperwork that had to be done with the state voter registration office to move them. I don't know all the details about that, but I know that that's, I think that's in motion. I just don't have a date as to when they may. My understanding, the intent is for them to still move to where the charter, or revenue are.
Right. But I don't think anybody is, I don't think anybody here has given direction for them, nor are we trying to push them out, with the exception of the knowledge that we are considering to use it, and that the extent we are not looking to do anything more than that.
Correct. I mean, we haven't just gone in there and told them, you know, they had to get out. You know, one, it is somewhat nice to have someone in the building to at least tell us when there's an issue and a problem, and we can get over there and address it. But we, I just don't know at this point in time, you know, the county's direction and a timeline for them.
With regards to the registrar's office, the Virginia Department of Elections has requirements that must be met before the registrar's office can move. They don't let them just say, okay, folks, pack it up, we're moving. They have to meet all these requirements beforehand.
Yeah, I think it's like a public notice has to be given and all that.
Have no idea of the details, but there are requirements.
Correct. And I know that the county has started the process on all of that, I just don't know where they're at.
Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you. Thank you. Our ANTC report, Mr. Alon?
Yes, a couple of things. Things are moving along really well. Again, I would encourage you, if you have not been by ANTC and driven up to the front entrance and looked at the Volkswagen bug that the students in the auto body class have redone, that is quite something to see. It is impressive. So these guys are learning a lot, and they're doing some excellent work. Second thing, Mrs. Sledzinski asked for and received approval to apply for a CTE Competitive Innovative Program Equipment Grant. The deadline on that was just last Friday, so I'm sure we don't have any word on whether we were successful in that, but that would certainly help us going forward if we get that grant.
Thank you, sir. The Governor's School report, Ms. Duncan?
Thank you. Yes, we recently had a meeting. We were informed of a variety of things. Currently, in this school year, one of the highlights is that they are going on a very nice field trip, and I say nice because it is going to be highly educational. The tattooist of us, which, Morris, the Harlem Renaissance in African-American Studies and Native American Literature, they are going to visit the Virginia Holocaust Museum and a multitude of other museums. Currently, there will be an increase to the budget, but that is not going to affect our division per se, but there is going to be a slight increase. All students seem to be doing well. They are also going to be having, if they haven't had it already, a Renaissance Fair, which is supposed to be really cool, because they dress up and they go all out. But other than that, Nottaway students appear to be doing wonderfully in it.
Thank you, Ms. Duncan. The SEAC report, Ms. Duncan?
Yes. We held our meeting, our last meeting in February. Currently, our SEAC, I mean, excuse me, our Special Education Division is going through normal federal monitoring, went through normal federal monitoring. Within that, VDOE has made and requested some adjustments for our SEAC. The VDOE would like it to be restructured some. It is guided to be 51% parental participation. VDOE is going to meet again to discuss some of those changes. I know Dr. Lewis and her staff are working hard on trying to make some of those things happen. One of the ways that they're trying to make that happen is, the SEAC is now featured on the division's website. Dr. Lewis is checking in on having the meeting announcements placed on the school social media Facebook pages. And our next meeting, we held April the 8th at 4:00 p.m. virtually, and that SEAC will receive the annual plan to us, and then I can bring it to the board at the next meeting. But Dr. Lewis will bring it, but, sorry. And that's it.
Thank you. Our student liaison report, Ms. Simpson?
Good afternoon. Not really much to talk about. Spring sports have started, softball, baseball, and track. Varsity girls play Monday and ended up losing to Kinston Forest 15-3, but ended up coming back that Tuesday over Brunswick. Baseball boys have a game tonight starting at 6:30. Today, we had to take cap and gown pictures, so that went pretty well. Ten Can Coffee visited the school recently with great success. It was really good. You guys should try it. And lastly, Principal Wilson has launched a student ambassador group, which will play an important role in representing our school, and the ambassadors will be guest speakers and meet monthly to discuss, you know, like different ideas and fundraising and stuff.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Rhimes, our superintendent, report.
Thank you, Mr. Abbott, board members. Last night, I attended the VSBAs South Side Region Spring Networking Forum and submitted the artwork of three of our students into the VSBAR contest. We had entries submitted for students from primary school, Nottaway High School, and Nottaway Middle School. And our Nottaway Middle School entry was the first place winner for that middle school contest.
Awesome.
Each of these students will be invited to and recognized at the April board meeting. And I'd like to remind the board that last year, we had a first-place winner, and that student will receive her framed artwork back in just a little bit. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, based on information from Ms. Wood, for the last four years, we have had a winner from first place to third place at this VSBAR contest. So that is quite an accomplishment for our students.
Great.
Also, the final piece of information to share this month, as the executive superintendent for the Governor's School, which I've been for three or four years now, today I spent the morning in an English class at the Keyesville campus, watching student presentations of classic British literature tales. And I'm an English major, and British Lit was one of my favorite subjects, so I just was, Chaucer was the topic, and I was in hog heaven. The kids dressed in period garb. They, each group created a meal, an entree. Not every group did everything, but one group did an entree, a couple of groups did dessert, one did the sides. That was also true to the period. And their video presentations were really interesting in that they did a good job of meshing the old-world stuff with current-day stuff. So, you know, they reimagined the tales that were told to be a little bit more modern, incorporating some modern music and modern dances, but it was wonderful to watch the students with this. And in about two weeks, I will visit the Alberta campus for the senior symposium, and then I will also attend the whole school, the entire Governor's School Gatsby Gala that will be in Chase City. And the Gatsby Gala is, if you think roaring twenties, they, again, dress in period wear for that, they do the Charleston, but they also do presentations related to their readings and work from there. And the Renaissance Fair was, if not last week, the week before. Yeah, so that's the superintendent's report for this month.
Thank you. Matters of school board interest, on March 25th, the VSBAR 2025 Spring Superintendent's Evaluation Workshop, which could be addressed either in Charlottesville or virtually. I know I am registered to see that virtually, because it's an update from the previous program that we once attended. On the 26th, school board works session. At that work session, be prepared to discuss what I will call the ALL questions. If you'd like to be more informed on that, talk to me after the meeting. On the On the twenty-seventh, we have the Joint Board Meeting with A N T C. Uh, are there any future agenda items? Ms. Duncan?
Um, we moved on to the next section.
Mr. Wilson?
No, not right now.
Mr. Rowe?
Nothing at this time.
Mr. Outlaw?
A couple of things, uh, and I won't go into a great deal of detail here, but, uh, first off, cell phones, the, uh, rule that we have is not being enforced across the board, and from information that I received just recently, there are some pretty serious infractions. And I do have a question on that, Dr. Grimes, of you, uh, on the, uh, the policy about videoing a fight may result in the phone becoming evidence and being turned into law enforcement. The student with the video also may have to go to court as a witness. A first offense is an out-of-school suspension for three days, second ascent, second offense five days, and third offense ten days. Past there being an abuse of the basic cellphone rule that they will not be used during school hours, and I'm paraphrasing there, I don't see the point in this, and it seems to be rather restrictive. And I would also have the question, does one of these, uh, punishments add on top
Well, I'm, I'm not quite sure how to...
That was a question to Dr. Grimes.
I, I appreciate that, but I'm not sure how to make it an agenda item.
Well, okay, uh, then just, if you could, Dr. Grimes, let me know via email, uh, the answers to this, I would certainly appreciate it. If you take the courier record and have the knowledge of, uh, what's in the paper, uh, we continue to have a problem with violence, more so in some of our schools than others. And to me, and it, I think, should be a concern to all of us, uh, we need to do something about that.
I appreciate that, 'cause I, I know that we have recently received some data from Dr. Grimes, we all received an email on those things that, uh, have been recorded. I will, uh, work with Dr. Grimes on the potential for a, an agenda item that would provide clarity to some of those, uh, things that we received, uh, more recently. Uh, because it, it, uh, it's good data, uh, it's about bad things that happen, but it's the, the kind of data that might allow the board to help in supporting the changes necessary so that administrators and especially those teachers can deal with these situations more effectively in their classrooms. Other, are there any other items? I'll start with Mr. Rowe.
Nothing at this time, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing.
Mr. Outlaw?
No.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes, I have a couple of things. One, um, I want to say thank you that I do see, I appreciate that, we need that, I thank you for that. Um, another one is that I appreciate Nodaway and the teachers doing what they've done with our self-contained classes, because those skills that were brought out, they are everyday life skills that you and I take for granted. But going to the store and buying a loaf of bread can be complex for some individuals, so I applaud them. Um, and thirdly, I guess I said two, I meant three, um, I'm sure that when it comes to discipline, there are no two families that do it the same way, and discipline is hard. We as adults and professionals have to be flexible and understanding while being firm and consistent. Sometimes, discipline should be a teaching moment rather than a punitive moment. Our discipline policy and procedures are created from guidance from D O E, Department of Education, and Virginia Department of Education. We as a school board and our superintendent use the guidelines from D O E and V D O E to create policy, and then the superintendent enforces that policy via Code Conduct and Handbook. Now, I took this, that I'm getting ready to read to you, out of the Student Code of Conduct, page sixty-five, which states, "The Nodaway School Board establishes expectations for student conduct so that public education is conducted in an atmosphere free of disruption and threat to persons or property and supportive of individual rights. In addition to the types of conduct prohibited below, the superintendent issues standards of code of conduct and lists of possible actions for violations of these standards." It next lists when the code of conduct applies to students, such as if they're on the bus, if they're on school property, and then it is followed by, and I quote again, "The School Board and the Superintendent biennial review of the model student code of conduct developed by the Virginia Board of Education to incorporate into policy and the standards of student conduct, a conduct a range, conduct a range of disciplined options and alternatives to preserve a safe and non-disruptive environment for effective learning and teaching. This year, we will need to review the student code of conduct." Now, realizing all of this, and also realizing that there are concerns in the community regarding discipline in our schools, I would like to offer a motion. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we create a committee to review all of the current discipline policies, including, included in that review of discipline in our handbook and our code of conduct. This committee would complete a comprehensive review of everything regarding discipline, then a presentation of any recommendations by the committee will be made. I would also like to include in this motion that the committee consists of the following individuals: two school board members, one administration's, administration staff from the central office, one administration staff from each school, one mental health individual, and three parents, preferably not employed with the division. I request that of you, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
Well, you've heard the motion, and I've heard a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? By the same side? Hearing none, uh, I will respectfully suggest that, um, March twenty-sixth, at our work session, that we can work out the fine details of that motion, so that we can figure out all of the, uh, steps to be able to, uh, get, uh, all of those positions, or named positions, to be made available and when, if that meets with everyone's expectations. Let me finish other. Uh, April tenth, everyone should be aware that from four-thirty to six-thirty, we will meet with the V S B A. Then, April fourteenth, sixteenth, twenty-second, and...
Sunny, sunny.
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman, could we please pause on sharing that information, sir?
Say again?
Could we please pause on sharing that information, sir?
Okay, I mean, it's just dates that I would make, want everybody to be, uh, prepared for, so, we will continue on. Closed, closed meeting resolution?
Oh, sorry, let me get over there. For student section two dot two dash three seven one one A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters. A, one, the consideration of personnel for five appointments, one art teacher, one, two substitute teachers, one car driver substitute, one assistant baseball coach. B, informational for resignations, one retirement. C, student discipline, and D, personnel matter.
Heard the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of...